Okay, go ahead and call this bid in order. First item on the agenda is roll call. Oliver Shaker.
Here.
Oliver Totten.
Here.
Oliver Scully.
Here.
Oliver Hedley.
Here.
Oliver West.
Here.
Oliver Mann Beebe.
Here.
All present and have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is the invitation by Pastor Daryl Jones from Crossroads Church to the pleasantly dismissed Oliver Beebe.
Let's pray together. Thank you, God, for freedom that we have in this country to gather and freedom to transact business on behalf of our community. And God, the freedom that we have to elect officials and to serve as officials. And so I pray your blessings on these men and women that sit in front of us as they represent districts within our town, that, God, they would represent their districts well, they would represent their people well, and that as a collective, they would represent our community well. I pray for the business that's transacted tonight, that it would be done decently and in order peacefully, without confusion, and that it would be for the betterment of each and every citizen. We just give you thanks for such an incredible community and the life that we get to live in. We give you thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Yes, Mayor, I have an add-on for this evening. It will be item 13G under ordinances, Bill 11-75 for its first and second reading this evening because this is the last meeting we have in the year. It's an ordinance authorizing donation of funds for purchase of the senior citizen baskets.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? I have motion Oliver Hedley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Oliver West. Any discussion?
May I ask a question?
Hmm?
Okay, in talking to some of my seniors, some of them can't always eat the grapefruit because of medications they're on, some of them can't eat the baskets before they did that. Is it possible that we think for next year, possibly donate gift cards from like Patricia's or some of the businesses around, Green Valley, of their choosing? I called and asked, we have 555 seniors in our community, and if we would put maybe a question on our water bills to see if they would be, which is the preference, and go with what the majority is? Because in talking to some, I'm finding that, I never heard of it, but I know three on my street that can have some of the fruits in their baskets. They appreciate the thought and everything, but being on a fixed end, some of them would prefer a $25 or whatever, $20 gift certificate, and that would make it a lot easier and promote business in town, too, still. Could we give that a possibility on our, a question on our water bill to see, you know, what others do? Because I almost speak to a smaller amount, but I would like to give that food for thought since they kind of asked me and I did what I passed it on.
At this time, we could look, the option is like 30 characters. It's a very small message, but we can play with it, see what we can come up with, give you some feedback. But more, what's probably more appropriate is to definitely bring that question up to the organizations that had the seniors' baskets to get their feedback as to whether they're considering something different.
Mr. Johnson, do you have it?
Well, I'm chairman of the basket committee. This was started out as a program to be a gift for senior citizens. When I took over last year, we cut back on the size of the baskets, cutting back on the amount of fruit and stuff because we knew it wasn't all getting eaten, and we included a ham with it instead. Last year, we had a corn king ham product that people didn't seem to care for. So this year, this year, we stepped up to a farmland ham that I hope is more presentable to people. But we tried to cut back on the fruit, but you know it's not all getting eaten.
Well, I know grapefruit is one. They can't be, that's the line I kept hearing the most about because of some of the medications, you can't, they can't eat grapefruit.
I think that the program, I didn't start the program, I think the program was started, I think the business gave to it as a gift to senior citizens, and I think it kind of takes away from it if we were changing completely, but that's my thoughts on it.
And check how many baskets do you normally put out?
We get the entire list. Last year, we had, I mean, it's like 540-some, and we ended up with, we had about 40 or so left over that we made numerous trips to houses trying to get people to travel south, whatever, for the winter. So this year, we've got 555 on the list, but we've only ordered 500 baskets, and if we go where we can make up more, but that way, it keeps costs back. Because last year, the extra we had, we just gave them to Patricia's and told them to give them out to customers as goodwill gifts, or I think we donated some of the stuff to Green Valley Assistance also. So this year, we're trying not to order more, but we're not getting everybody that's on the list, even though we try.
Any additional discussion on the approval of the agenda? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. Okay, next item is the assist, this patient, we ask that assistants step forward to the microphone and address the board. Try to look at your comments to two minutes if you can. Do we have anyone this evening who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Move that we accept the consent agenda.
I have motion Oliver Scully to accept the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Oliver Totten. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. Seeing no proclamation, we'll move on to presentations then. This month, we decided to go ahead and go with two businesses this month, and we have A&amp;A Electric and Hollywood Town Lights, Scotts Rock and Roll Grill. So we have representation of those businesses that have stepped forward. Usually, we have a nice plaque that represents, Jamie had a birthday, we weren't able to get that done, so people will know that plaque, too, usually don't have that plaque. But I want to thank you for everything you've done. Here's what we picked two businesses this month, especially everything we've done with the Christmas tree lighting and all lights. A&amp;A Electric helped out a lot with the lights, and we helped out with the sound with the various Christmas tree lighting, and donated a lot of gifts out over there for the raffles. So I just want to thank you for everything you've done this month. Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is for consideration, proposed improvements and special assessments for the Green Valley Marketplace NID. So I will now officially open this public hearing at 7:09 is the time I have. Before we take any comments, public comments in general, the board will first hear from the city staff and then the primary property owner for the area. So first up, we'll have a brief review from Joe Lauber on the improvements and assessments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. I want to just kind of, for the benefit of the public this evening, just try to run through a couple of the basics with respect to what we've got on the improvements and the special assessments. Just for the record, my name is Joe Lauber, I'm with Lauber Municipal Law, I'm the city's Special Economic Development Council. My address is 1300 Southwest Hook Road. Prior to this hearing, I submitted two memos to the board to provide background information regarding the proposed improvements and the proposed special assessments. Those memos were dated November 22, 2011, and December 6, 2011, respectively, and I would ask the mayor and board to accept those memos into the record for this hearing. The proposed ordinance included for your, in your packets for consideration later this evening includes a full description and map of the proposed improvements and the proposed, and a assessment roll for the special assessments. As I get started here, I'll just note that up on the screen, you have a copy of the neighborhood improvement district map. This will show you the properties that will be affected by these special assessments that are being levy. The heavy black line shows basically the area of the NID. It extends, you'll see a little bit to the east into some land that's owned by the school district that is tax exempt. That's basically in the area of a, will be in the area of like a water detention type area, and there's an easement that the developer had to get from the school district in order to place that pond there. You'll also see the carve-out in the middle, that is property that's for the existing hotel, that hotel, if you'll recall from the TIF process and through this NID process, that's not a part of the development, and that's not part of what Mr. Lorino, through SG Property Management, the developer of the TIF for Project Two, for the marketplace TIF, that's not part of their property. So it shows the carve-out for that. The next item, the next item I'd like to show you here is on the screen, this is a copy of the map of the improvements. There's obviously a lot of detail in some of the things we had to do for this NID, this map, and then the next slide that you'll see are pretty detailed. What I'd like to point out is this color, it's kind of purple looking on the wall here, it's pink when you view the map, it shows the area of the NID improvements, what the NID improvements will be paying for. So the area in pink, you see up and down Buckner Tarzany, you see the westbound I-70 off-ramp, you see the realigned north outer road. Those are all the kind of hard improvements that are going to be done, that will be constructed. You see the area that's surrounded in blue, that's kind of to the, it's the north, it's the right side of this map. That's basically where the theater and some of the inline shops, that's kind of surrounded in blue. That part is not included, that's what will be paid for by the TIF in this case. So that gives you an idea of a map of the NID improvements. Obviously, these plans are on file with the city clerk and can be viewed, and we've got bigger copies of them for that. But that just gives you an idea of where the improvements are, what the improvements are. They basically include all these road improvements that you've seen, they include publicly funded water, storm and sanitary sewer improvements as well in the area. The total cost of the NID-funded improvements is estimated to be about $2,857,946, and that includes NID-eligible soft costs like consultants' fees and engineering and those types of things. There's some fees for, was it the water, water?
Corps of Engineers.
There's a Corps of Engineers fee for steam, stream mitigation is what it was on that, was an additional fee that's in there. In addition to the cost of constructing the NID projects and the cost to maintain the project, in addition to the cost of constructing the NID projects, are the costs to maintain the project while the financing is in place, and we also have the cost to undertake the short-term financing of the project through the issuance of NID notes. So the NID petition itself had a requirement in it that there'd be $5,000 per year made available for maintenance of these improvements while they were being financed at that time, and that's, it's a piece of the NID Act, and it was something that the developer followed in that case when they submitted that petition. Additionally, what you need to know is that the NID will be, there will be short-term financing through this neighborhood improvement district, okay? And those will be undertaken by the issuance of NID notes, NID loans against future revenues that will be coming through. Essentially, the purpose of these notes is to serve as short-term financing while the improvements are being done. So if you think about it here, we're using a financing that's going to use special assessments as the way to pay it back. And, but what we're doing in the first place is we have to go out and construct improvements to make that property value go up, and it's that increased property value ultimately that the special assessments will be imposed upon, and then the developer who owns the property will be the person then who pays it back over a period of time. While the construction is being undertaken, though, we don't have those property values, we have to kind of get what, you know, what you might consider like a construction loan, it's a short-term loan, that's what the NID notes will do for a period of up to three years while we're under construction. And I'll get to what happens after that here in just a little bit when we talk about what's on down the road for the Board of Aldermen here in a couple of years with respect to this. But in order to take care of the short-term financing, there will be costs obviously of issuing that short-term financing. That number is about $195,000, $194,500 is the estimate right now. That's all been kind of pulled together, wrapped into the cost of construction. So what we're looking at in total for the NID at this point in time, which would be the improvements, the annual maintenance, and the short-term financing, is a cost of Okay, I apologize, this spreadsheet does a whole lot of things, you can probably tell by the detail that's on it. Unfortunately, it doesn't show very well on the screen. You do have copies in the packet here, but I'll try to kind of give you an idea of what we've got going on here in that, in that document. But this is the proposed assessment roll, and it puts all the information in one place. At the bottom center, it's kind of very small here, hard to see, but what you'll see is that $3,152,466 number I just talked about. That's all the NID improvements, that's the annual cost of maintenance, and that's the issuance of the special assess, of the short-term financing for the NID, all rolled into one at that $3.15 million number. At the left side of the table, what you'll see is a breakout. Each line that's on here, you'll see that the first, it's a series of numbers, and that's a typical Jackson County tax parcel number. And so we've identified every parcel that was within that area that was on the map earlier in there. So every parcel is listed, and then we give a property description, whether it actually has an address, or whether there's some sort of other descriptor if there's no address available, and then the owner of record. The owner of record for all of the parcels that are not tax-exempt is SG Property Management, that's controlled by Paul Lorino, the developer. He has gone out and purchased all of the property within the area as was required through the TIF. The only two parcels that are not included, that are included in the area that are not owned by Mr. Lorino through SG Property Management are the piece that's owned by the school district we talked about before, and then any right-of-way that's currently owned by MODA. With the way the TIF petition, or I'm sorry, the NID petition was submitted to the city a year ago when it was approved, it said basically that the special assessments would be paid by all of the property that is not tax-exempt. So those are listed at the two bottom, but there are zero numbers given for the assessments on there because they are tax-exempt. The NID petition also provided that each of the non-tax-exempt properties would be benefited by the proposed improvements and would share in that cost on a square footage basis. So if you look at your sheet here, the middle column, the kind of where everything lines up, where it goes, you know, clear down to the bottom, it's right under the words Green Valley in the title, is the actual square footage per parcel. And so that, then this Excel spreadsheet that you're seeing here will just then calculate everything out. The, and then the columns to the right, there are kind of two, three different colors of shading. One breaks out the improvement costs, one breaks out the annual maintenance costs, and one breaks out the short-term financing costs, and kind of shows you a square footage basis on that. The end game of this, though, is that each non-tax-exempt parcel located within the NID boundaries will be liable to pay a special assessment in the amount of $3.3283, okay? So just, we have to run the numbers out to actually make it work for the financing, so it goes beyond just the normal, you know, hundreds that you'd see with, you know, when you're dealing with dollars, but it's $3.3283 per square foot to cover the cost. The total annual assessment for each parcel is listed in the far-right column. The cumulative total for all the parcels will be $157,622.30 per year. So, you know, in the end, that's what the ultimate special assessment will be based on where we are today with estimated numbers on that. Again, you'll note that the tax-exempt properties don't show any special assessment that was set up in the NID petition. The, where we'll go ultimately from here then is the, once the applicant has provided their information, the public has spoken, the city would have an opportunity to look at an ordinance, we'll talk about that again later. But ultimately, if the, if the board makes a decision to go ahead and approve on at least first reading this evening, the ordinance to order the improvements done and the financing done, then what actually will happen from that point forward is they will, the improvements will be constructed, the financing will be had, and then once the improvements are completed and we have a final list of the numbers, then staff and consultants and the developer will be back in front of the board, it'll probably be, you know, two, three years from now, to kind of say, okay, here's what the final numbers were, we turn those in, and then ultimately, you give, you'd be asked to be giving approval to issue bonds that would take out that initial financing and then would be the long-term financing for the NID. But you can't get there until you know what your ultimate costs are. That's the information I have for you this evening in the public hearing. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions, please.
Mike's kind of on the road. Somebody asked me about getting the road, how much interference is there going to be? Is it McClary Road that goes to the school? And that over there? I know it sounds silly, but...
As far as interference, I guess I don't know.
When the construction starts.
Well, I think, you know, there's going to be some traffic issues as construction occurs, I mean, there is a price to progress. In the end, it will be a much better situation for all of the property owners and all of the customers of the businesses that are over there and that are trying to, you know, get folks to and from, and we'll have a much better situation in the end. Ryan, if you have anything to add?
Yeah, I just add that, I mean, the way that we've done the construction phasing, we're ensuring that at no time is the I-70 ramps closed, Main Street closed, or McQuarrie closed where they can't have school bus access.
Right, yeah, this one was asking me about that one, and I said, Nancy, that's so narrow now. And I'm sitting there going, I don't know, I will ask, so I...
What they'll do, what they'll actually do is probably construct the new road before they demo the old McQuarrie, and then once it's complete, they'll go ahead and demo the Main Street entrance to McQuarrie.
Okay, no, I will tell them, they do have at least two years to worry about, right?
The construction is...
About eight months.
Eight months? Okay.
We've been waiting long enough at this point.
I'm sorry, okay, eight months, let me hurry you up gently.
Three to five months, actually.
Three to five?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm still stuck talking.
That road's not going to be closed, so you shouldn't have to worry about it.
Okay.
I mean, they're not going to be doing any construction on, because they're building a new road.
Before they get to?
Yeah, so it should...
Well, I didn't know that.
They should have figured out a road.
Okay, well, I just want to tell them so that, because when they asked me about driving over to the school and that, and I said, I don't know, I can't see that at all.
Tell them it should be happier because the new road will be much better, further away from the ramps.
I'll tell them, call the mayor.
Okay, so any additional questions for Joe? I will hear from Paul Lorino, whose company is the primary property owner.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Definitely excited to get this project going. We've got a few more hearings to go, we're there. Joe pretty well covered everything in the NID. Just wanted to emphasize that all these improvements under the NID are public improvements, so they're improvements that will be owned by the city when they're completed, deconstructed to city standards, will be bid just as if the city was bidding them themselves. However, we'll be doing the administration portion of it, and the city, the city will be reviewing that. All the plans and specifications for these improvements have been turned into the city for review, and we have a few just minor tweaks to it as Rick Arroyo's been reviewing those plans, and they're just about ready to go, probably right about the first of the year. We should have the full set of completely approved plans to go out for bid. We do own all the property within the district. I would, one thing I would also emphasize on the statutory requirements is that the property being approved is of higher value than the improvements are being put in, and we have turned in approvals into the city to verify that. So as far as the financial situation, the city's in a good position on that means. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Lorino?
No.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
At this time now, I'll open up the floor to any public comments, for anyone who'd like to speak either for or against the improvements or the special assessments. If you would like to speak, please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and try to look at your comments to two minutes if possible. Anyone wish to speak for or against any of the improvements or assessments in the district? Seeing none then, we will go ahead, there's no other questions from the board, we'll end this public hearing at 7:26. Seeing previous business or new business, we'll move on to ordinances.
Bill 11-69, it is the second reading, it will be ordinance 2193. And it is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to purchase a 2011 Chevrolet Tahoe for use by the Green Valley Police Department. Second reading, ordinance 2193.
I move that we accept bill number B-1169 for a second reading and making it ordinance number, I'm sorry.
I have motion Oliver Totten to accept bill 11-69 for a second reading, making ordinance, ordinance 2193. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Oliver Beebe. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. Beebe?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
Six zero, Mayor. Bill B-11-70, second reading. It will be ordinance 2194, an ordinance amending the budget of the City of Green Valley, Missouri for fiscal year 2011. Second reading, ordinance 2194.
Mayor, I move that we accept bill 11-70 for a second reading, making it ordinance number 2194.
I have motion Oliver Beebe to accept bill 11-70 for a second reading, making ordinance 2194. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Oliver Totten. Any discussion?
I just would like to bring to the attention of the board that in your packets this week, you did have some additional information, including a page that called the budget amendment highlights, and it talked about where the adjustments were made. For the most part, revenues were reduced to the general fund, so as to help with balancing in that area. Expenditures were also reduced to almost $120,000. Part fund followed suit with revenues reduced by almost $55,000. That was due to property and sales tax, and it was offset, though, by a transfer of the general obligation bonds for the trail project, to show a net reduction of only $4,239. Expenditures were increased to almost $168,000 to cover the trail improvements and the purchase of a mower. And the transportation fund revenues were reduced, almost $86,000, as a result of reduced sales tax, interest revenue, and... Can you talk about what first stands?
That county, Yerba and Road System.
Thank you. Being used for a joint county and city project managed by the county, the expenses were reduced by $62,000. The largest reduction was $52,000 for loads completed by the county with these funds. And then in water and sewer fund, the water sewer revenues were reduced by almost $400,000. This was due to reduction in water sales, sewer collections, interest and tax fees. Expenditures were reduced by $177,000. The reductions are a result of lower processing fees and engineering fees. And that is an overall summary of the highlights of the reductions and amendments that were made to the 2011 budget.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. West?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Beebe?
Yes.
Bill, six zero, Mayor. Bill B-11-71, second reading, ordinance 2195, ordinance approving the 2012 fiscal year budget, City of Green Valley, Missouri. Second reading, ordinance 219... Second reading, ordinance 2195.
Mayor, I recommend that we accept Bill B-11-71 for a second reading, making it ordinance number 2195.
Have motion all of you, West, to approve Bill 11-71 for a second reading, making ordinance 2195, do I have a second?
Second.
Second order, Hedley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Cotton?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Bibby?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Shafer?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Bill B-11-72, second reading, it will be ordinance...
96.
All fair, please do it. 2196, thank you. Second reading, 2196, an ordinance approving the fee schedule for the City of Green Valley, Missouri for fiscal year 2012. Second reading, ordinance 2196.
Mayor, I move we accept Bill 11-72 for a second reading, making it ordinance 2196.
Have motion all of you to accept Bill 11-72 for a second reading, making ordinance 2196, do I have a second?
Second.
Second order, West. Any discussion?
At this time, I do want to bring, I don't know if the board noticed, but the fee schedule was, none of the rates for 2012 were changed. There seemed to be some concern over the 2013 figures and beyond as it relates to the occupational licenses. Those have reverted back for future years at the existing rate. Should those items be further reviewed and discussed with the city attorney, whether they should be adjusted or not, we would bring those back to your attention in ample time for further consideration, but at this time, projected years do show the current rate, and those are the only changes that were made to the fee schedule that you will be approving today.
Okay, any questions or discussion? All fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Bibby?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Shafer?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Bill B-11-73, second reading, it will be ordinance 2197, an ordinance authorizing the payment for annual license and support fees for Summit Software for 2012. Second reading, ordinance 2197.
I move that we accept bill number 11-73 for a second reading and making it ordinance 2197.
Okay, have motion all of you, Scully, to approve Bill 11-73 for a second reading, making ordinance 2197, do I have a second?
Second.
Second order, Cotton. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
West?
Yes.
Shafer?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Bibby?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Six zero. Bill B-11-74, second, excuse me, first reading, an ordinance ordering the Green Valley Marketplace Neighborhood Improvement District Improvements to be made, and ordering the assessment rule for the NID project to be filed with the county recorder deeds, and authorizing the City of Green Valley, Missouri to obtain financing therefor. First reading, Bill 11-74.
I move that we accept bill number B-11-74 for a first reading and bring it back for a second reading by title.
Have motion all of you, Scully, to approve Bill 11-74 for its first reading, bring it back by title for a second reading, do I have a second on the motion? Second order, Hedley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, first read, Mayor. And finally, we have Bill B-11-75, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the donation of $5,000 from public health funds, as well as donation of one mayor slash board of aldermen meeting salary, $375 for fiscal year 2011 toward the purchase of seniors' holiday gift baskets from Patricia's Foods, Green Valley, Missouri. First reading, Bill B-11-75.
Mayor, I move we accept Bill 11-75 for its first reading, bring it back for a second reading by title.
Have motion all of you to accept Bill 11-75, bring it back by title for a second reading, do I have a second?
Second.
Second order, Cotton. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, first, it's on for a second reading. Second reading, Bill B-11-75, it will be ordinance 2198, which is an ordinance authorizing the donation of $5,000 from public health funds, as well as donation of one mayor, board of aldermen meeting salary, $375 for fiscal year 2011 toward the purchase of seniors' holiday gift baskets from Patricia's Foods, Green Valley, Missouri. Second reading, ordinance 2198.
Mayor, I move we accept Bill 11-75 for a second reading, making it ordinance 2198.
Have motion all of you to accept Bill 11-75 for a second reading, making ordinance 2198, do I have a second?
Second.
Second order, Cotton. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Hedley?
Yes.
Bibby?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Shafer?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Six zero.
Okay, next item is resolutions. Seeing none, move on to city attorneys reports.
That being heard, your honor.
Next item is city administrator and staff reports.
I don't have anything other than I'd like to thank my staff for all of their hard work on budget. Kathy has spent numerous, numerous hours as well as most of the staff, she's worked at a bank job, and everyone's really working on it as a team this year, and I feel very blessed and very fortunate to be at City of Green Valley, it's such a great team. Having said that, I believe, Ryan, you have something for the group?
Yep, just quickly, I wanted to let the board know that probably within the next month, you're going to see some information coming forward, staff recommendations in a memo that addressed the update of our building codes. We currently operate underneath the 2003 ICC Building Code family, and we're wanting to update that to 2012. The building department is currently doing the analysis on the changes and what that would be, and I would probably say within the next two weeks, I will have a memo explaining to the board members exactly what we expect to be the issues, but also highlighting kind of a schedule. We're going to try and involve the building community in it, or design professionals also. So, I'll have some more information, but I wanted to give you a heads-up that we're going to be starting down that road, and hopefully by spring of next year or early summer, we will have a new set of codes for construction.
Is this, okay, is this new construction, or is this going to affect personal people of houses?
Well, that's part of it, will be the property maintenance code, but we currently, I mean, we'll just be updating that also. We currently have the 2003 property maintenance code, so we would just be bringing that up to 2012.
Well, how much time are you going to allow the people with homes that would be affected because of...
If it's not something we're enforcing right now, we're not going to enforce it just immediately with the new code.
Okay, I just don't want someone coming...
Yeah, it's, there's not going to be any, any hard decisions or changes that we're going to make right now.
Okay.
Ryan, two questions. One, do you anticipate many problems switching, and then, two, what do you do for someone mid-flight in construction of a house? Do you go by the old code, or do you...
Yeah, we finish the project out under the code that was adopted whenever their permit was approved. As far as some of the issues that I anticipate, I don't know, some of the things, it's kind of split in the building community, some of the builders really like some of the changes that are being proposed. There's a lot more structural information that's required in the 2012 code, wall bracing, they have to have diagrams that show, you know, how you connect the upper level to the lower level to the foundation, has a lot to do with tornadoes, wind, and then seismic activity. And then also, we're going to be looking at if we're going to require every set of plans being submitted to the city to be stamped by a design professional, which would be an architect or engineer, I would suspect. That's, that'll be an interesting conversation with all of the stakeholders.
Ryan, do you ever start, I mean, with the builders still, or are you meeting with them on monthly basis?
Not on a monthly basis, I've been, I've been with them probably, I want to say three months ago, I believe it was. He meets with all of the builders pretty often, just on an individual basis, but a big builders meeting, the last one that we had was probably, was the fee schedule update, and it was back in May.
Any additional staff comments?
Not at this time.
Board of aldermen reports a comment, Oliver Shafer.
Thank you to Sadie Ross for the hard work that he's been doing, along with Chief, appreciate that, I know we were too sick, but come out and enjoy the season. Merry Christmas to the staff, appreciate you guys, and all the hard work you guys put in, man, you guys, since I've been on board, you guys have really, really had a tough, you guys, last year, you guys did a good job, and we're going to be here. Other than that, Merry Christmas to everybody, and we'll see you next year.
Oliver Cotton?
Well, I have some people asking about the, you know, over there by the post office and across from Nichols, the little pylons that are sitting there with the dip in it.
Okay.
They're asking what's going on, and why there was a plastic bucket with cement in it. I didn't know, so I'm sitting here going, I even talked to the mayor.
I know, I never went to the...
What is it? Because they asked me, so I just thought I'd...
You said it's across the street from the post office?
Well, it's at a corner from the post office and across the street from Nichols, but they've got pylons there, and there's a dip still with the, where some cement, but believe it or not, there was a white five-gallon bucket with cement in it, so I just thought I'd ask, because they asked me.
Yeah, I will check into it, mention it.
Okay, I thank you, but I wish everybody Merry Christmas and a prosperous new year.
Oliver Scully?
Nothing at this time, but I would tell staff, thank you for a good year.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Oliver?
Nothing at this time, same comments, Merry Christmas, hope everyone has a good holiday, and able to enjoy a time off, assuming we don't get any snow over. But, no, thanks for, thanks for all the efforts this year.
Oliver West?
Ditto.
Or Bibby?
Well, I did have something brought to me by three different people this week, and that was the intersections, like if Buckner turned to an AA, and then AA and Steinhardt, the lights don't seem to work properly a lot of the time, like they'll stay long, long times just sitting there.
Okay.
I know one of my friends got a ticket because she finally turned, and she went on through it, and the police was right behind her, so she was asking, how could they do that? They were sitting there as long as I was, and you knew there was something wrong with it, so, I don't know. So, I just wonder if you would have to check, because I know it was a crap, around like here.
Yeah.
Happens to me.
So, it's, yeah, is it two spots lights on Buckner, or is it the one at Steinhardt?
Both of them.
Okay.
And even one of the guys that complained about it works for the county, and he said he's up there early in the mornings getting coffee on the Casey store, and he's sitting there forever waiting. So, if you could just check that out for me and see if there's something that could be done on that, if he senses there's something's wrong. Other than that, I didn't have anything else, just the same as the others, Merry Christmas, and thanks, everybody, for all that you've done this year, and hope we all have a good 2012.
Mayor, before you proceed, I do have one more item for the board. I did want to announce that officially that the Christmas lunch for employees will be held on Friday, December 23rd. It will be, we maneuvered the dates and the locations, it will be at the community centers from 11:00 to 1:00, so employees will be full-time announced they are available, and for our earlier discussion, City Hall will be posting that, letting the paper know, that City Hall will be closing at 1:00 o'clock that day.
Mayor's report, first thing, just a reminder, Santa Train is next Monday from 4:00 to 6:00, if you make it down here.
4:00 to 6:00.
4:00 to 6:00, yeah. You'll know when we'll be in town.
I'm sure I'll know.
Next item, just some food for thought for everyone, I've talked to Alexa about this a little bit, but I know we were kind of moving forward on this stuff to do over the Lake District, and then we got kind of, you know, postponed a little bit, and one of the reasons we got postponed is because the county's looking at commuter rail, and they basically kind of told us to hold off on anything, because that's their big project of looking at commuter rail, and more in like, they're probably going to put on a ballot for the next year to see if that passes, and if it does, you know, the Grand Valley line would be one of the, would be the first line, and they would do, would be that line is what they're waiting on. So, that's kind of why the overlay district is kind of up in the air now with this, and kind of wait and see what, where the county's going on that. I know we were, you know, moving forward, and we're going to make some changes, so I've talked to Alexa, and I know staff is going to look at this, probably bring it to you in early March, but I would like to see us for the time be, to basically put, to waive any variance fee on any existing business in the overlay district who wants to do something to improve their business, or do some exterior things, their business kind of, and all that right now, you have to pay the fee, they go to the BZA board, I would like us to look at, probably begin in March, when people would start construction, to waive those fees, and then they can just go to BZA board without having to pay the fees. So, I think that would be, you know, nice stuff for us to take, to show we haven't forgotten them, and then hopefully, you know, by that point, we're a little bit more, but what the county's looking to do, and, I mean, they're talking like maybe in August ballot issues, so we should definitely know by the end of summer what's going to happen down there. So, this is food to think about, if I'd like to bring that up probably in the spring to look at. Anybody have any just, that set objections to doing that, or?
I'd like to do it.
If we can think of anything else, too, that we can, if anybody else comes up with anything we can do to kind of ease that while we're, you know, kind of holding pattern down there. Love to hear them, if there's something, if we can do anything, make these home businesses down there. Other than that, then, last thing I have is, this will be our last meeting till January 9th, so we'll see everyone there, and see if the boy Christmas party for them, but just want to wish everyone happy holidays and Happy New Year till then, and we'll start back in 2012, if we have a, have another productive year for the city, so. Do you have any for the executive session?
Yes, we do, we have a need for personnel.
Personnel, okay. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for hiring and firing this area of employees, personnel issues, drive a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion.
Special Paul Arino and Scully, do I have a second?
Cotton.
Second Oliver Cotton. Any discussion? All is fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And just hold, Oliver Shafer?
Yes.